Good afternoon and welcome to the Committee on Higher Education jointly with the Committee on Labor and Technology. It is 3:03 PM. We're in room 229. Today is Valentine's Day, February 14. So happy Valentine's to everyone out there.
I'm red.
We're in red, yes. Lot of reds today. If you're in red, you can testify. If you're not, you can't. Hi, ladies and gentlemen. To my right is the Chair of the Committee on Labor and Technology, Senator Morawaki. To my left is a Vice Chair, Senator Kidani, a member of both committees. His Senator Gil Keith Agarun. And this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the light of the event, we must abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties. Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:00 PM in room 229 and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. For those of you participating remotely, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it's returned to testify. Testifiers will be limited to two minutes each. At the end of two minutes, the audio will be automatically muted. If there are any temporary glitches during your terms of testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the committee has your testimony. With that, we will start with our first agenda item, the 3 o'clock agenda. That is Senate Bill 1415. This is relating to the University of Hawaii. Requires the University of Hawaii to submit annual reports of all university employees who perform work from a location outside the state of Hawaii during an applicable year to the legislature no later than December 31 of that year. And we have Candace Park from the Deputy of Attorney General here with comments. Well, you're in person. Nice to see you, Candace. Thank you.
Chair Kim, Chair Morawaki, members of the committee. The Department would just like to point out that the bill needs to have the statewide concern language. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Jan Govea, testifying University of Hawaii. Not here. Let's see. We have actually 64 or 63 other testifiers. And let's see, they're all in support except one. That's great. Anyone here wishing to testify on this measure that didn't sign up or signed up? And I'm not going to read all six before names. Not anybody on Zoom? Hearing none on Zoom? Members, any questions? Any comments? Hearing none? You are going to be supported. Call the Joint Committee back to order. We are on decision making for Senate Bill 1415. The recommendations from the Chairs are to pass with amendments to include Article 10, Section 6 of the Hawaii State Constitution that has a requisite for statewide concern and any other non-substantive and technical amendments. Any discussion, members? Hearing none? Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 1415, if passed with amendments, Chair votes aye. Senator Kidani votes aye. Senator P. Nola, excuse me. Senator Keith Agarun?
Yes.
Senator Kidani, excuse me.
Thank you. Same recommendation for the Labor and Technology Committee. Chair votes aye.
Putting on Senate Bill 1415, recommendations to pass with amendments noting excused absence of Senators Ihara and Favella. Are there any reservations or notes? If not, recommendations adopted.
Want to call to order the Committee on Higher Education jointly with the Committee on Agriculture and the Environment. It is 3:07 PM agenda. We're in room 229. Today is Tuesday, February 14. Then I've already read the announcements. I'm not going to read it again, starting with Senate Bill 1586. This is relating to the University of Hawaii College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources. It appropriates funds to the University of Hawaii to establish five full-time equivalent extension specialist agent positions at the College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources. We have testifying first up is Environmental Health Administration. Testifying for the department. Anyone here? Yes, please come on.
I'm testifying.
Okay. Thank you.
Allow my Chair, Vice Chair, rest of the committee, and your rhetoric intermed for College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources. Thank you for providing me this opportunity to testify in support of the bill. And we have few amendments that we would like to include. And these amendments are in my written testimony. I just wanted to kind of add that you all know that SITAR is the Land Grant College at University of Hawaii. We are carrying the land definition. And part of our mission is to, of course, to make sure that we can address all, improve the life of the stakeholders and people of Hawaii. And we do that through extension research and extension. And right now, SITAR only has 30 extension agents that serve entire state of Hawaii. Five of them, we are right now supporting through the soft money, through the grants, because these positions are not permanent. And out of these 30 extension agents, five of them actually specifically work with our youth for age programs. So only 25 of the extensions agents are here to really help our farmers and our stakeholders when it comes to the agriculture. And for that reason, we are strongly supporting this bill. And of course, as long as it does not have a negative impact of Board of Regional Approved Budget. Thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's see, do we have anyone here from the Department of Environmental Health to testify? Okay, let's see. University of Hawaii, Christopher Schuler, Thomas Gian Bellicca.
Senator, added the University of Hawaii.
Hold on, show me. We are called back to order. Apologize for the confusion. Too many agendas on our docket. So we are on 1586, correct? Relating to University of Hawaii College of Tropical Agriculture. And I said that we have got five positions. So Anna Wizerk, that's already testified, right? Thank you. Brian Miyamoto for the Farm Bureau. I saw Brian in here also.
Your experience.
Okay, in support. John Morgan, testifying for Kulu Ranch in support. Nicole Galassi, testifying for the Cattlemen's Council in support on Zoom. There you are.
Aloha. Thank you, Chair Kim, Chair Gabbard, Vice Chair Kidani, and Richards. I'm Nicole Galassi, representing the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council. We stand on our testimony in strong support as extension agents really are key to making sure best practices get to our ranchers and farmers on the ground and vice versa, that the university knows what needs to be researched. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I also do want to note our support for SB 1488, which I most likely won't be able to be here for. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Benwright in support. Michael Munekata for Ulu Pono Initiative in support. Christian Firm, testifying for UPO. Thank you. And we have, let's see, 16, 18, eight others all testifying in support. Anyone here wishing to testify on this measure? Anyone on Zoom wishing to testify? If not, okay, we'll move on to the next time. Next. Oh, questions, members? First, SITAR.
So Anna, what would these five new extension specialists do?
So three of these positions are specifically for the livestock. One of the livestock is going to be the statewide specialist that is going to be based in Manoa and travel to all the islands. The other one is livestock to be based in Kauai, on Kauai County. And the third one, livestock is in Hilo. Over two position, one, the position is to work with GAP program and food safety. And the last one is entomologist to work in Hilo.
How can you guys know one livestock person on Molokai being the situation that it is?
So on Molokai, Molokai is actually serviced by our Maui County.
No, I know that, but you guys' challenge is that when there's an issue there, you guys cannot be on flight, like every other position that has been removed from Molokai. If there is an issue, you guys wait for two, three days. By then, that issue has already been moved or taken over by whether it be pest, disease, or the infection has already been done. So you guys showing up late to the party.
Well, thank you for your comment. I understand your concerns. As if we can address this, we will. But right now, we are very short on the positions. SITAR has lost almost one-third of our college through pandemic. And these five positions are the five position that have been identified by our stakeholders that they believe that are the highest need that they would like us to address. So I thank you for your comments, and we will try to.
So the reason I ask is because your stakeholders are also there, yeah, with livestock?
Yes.
And you guys have a big problem right now with livestock there?
Yes.
So would it be in the best interest if you put the livestock person on Molokai? And if your problems on Maui, then you go and answer the questions there?
So the specialist that is supposed to be on Maui, it's actually extension specialist that has freeway split. That means that this person has to do instruction, extension, and research. And this position is also crucial, that research, sorry, the instruction part is extremely crucial to our education program in animal science. So we need that person to be at least partially on Oahu so it can work with our animal science students. This is one of the quickest growing program at SITAR. So but this is the statewide position. So there is no doubt that this person will be able to travel to Molokai if needed.
Okay, I'll be watching.
Thank you.
I have a question. How many, do you have any vacant positions?
So we have a very few handful of vacant positions that we are even advertising right now, waiting for official permission to, for official approval for exception from no hiring freeze. And one of them has just become available, and we will be hiring it as soon as we can. So.
Can the Department of SITAR send in what positions are vacant?
Yes, of course.
Which would your recruit?
Yes, thank you.
Members, any other questions?
Anna, how many farms visit on average is each extension specialist assists in each of the counties? Just to give an idea.
So our, it depends on the position, right? So like, for example, when we talk, for example, when we're talking about extension agents that works with, for example, coffee, we have only one extension agent that is, for example, on Big Island, and she has to carry, cover all the farms. So it depends. But lots of our extension agents right now, they're covering entire state because we are so short in the extension agent staffing.
And with your vacancies, the vacancies, do you have any idea how many farmers were not served in the past three years?
That's a, that's a difficult question to answer because even that we are short on positions, our extension agents do absolutely best to service as many farmers as possible, even if that requires them to go on the weekends or something. We also are working, we started during the COVID, working with our farmers and allowed and provide some of the programming for Zoom, through Zoom, so we can access more of them quicker. And we continue with that as long as it's needed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Question?
Senator? Kidani. Senator Kidani.
Oh, yes, no problem.
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned a hiring freeze. How long has that?
So the hiring freeze, we had since the COVID started. It was implemented to make sure that we can respond to the, and the hiring freeze is a system-wide by the president of the university to make sure that we can stay in our budget, especially when the times were difficult and we didn't know how pandemic is going to impact the state budget.
And then when did the hiring freeze end?
It hasn't ended yet. So we have, let me clarify that, actually. So we have a hiring freeze on all G-funded position, that means state-funded positions and tuition. So if we wanted to use tuition funds or if we wanted to use permanent position, we have to ask the president for approval to have an exception to, no hiring freeze. Anything that is used, we use the research direct money or if we have any other external grants, then we do not need to have that permission. But right now, and that's a system-wide.
What percentage of freeze? Everything is frozen?
I am not probably the best person to answer that question because this is a system-wide initiated by president. But anything that is G-funded is frozen right now. We do have opportunity to ask for faculty positions. We, it's called from, at least in Manoa, from the Provost that comes once a year. The deans provide top priorities. There is the Manoa White Committee that evaluates these requests from the deans, and the deans will receive positions that were approved by this committee. And we were lucky and thankful that we have received six positions for this academic year. Two of them are extension positions and four are the instruction or research, all mixed, because we do have freeway splits.
So those six positions are G-funded positions?
Yes.
And those were frozen?
So. So right now, we are not allowed freely to hire the faculty or staff on G-funded positions, G-funded positions or the tuition money. And we need to have a permission from Provost and President to hire if we wanted to do that. And we have to show that there is a huge need. But once a year, at least for Manoa, we are receiving permissions to hire the faculty. And as I mentioned, the SITAR has received six faculty position in the fall, which were, which were currently recruiting.
Well, I guess we're concerned because pandemic is over. It more so seems that everybody is being called back in. And UH has been asking for more positions in the budget. So you're asking for more positions, there's a freeze on positions. So I guess we're going to score that.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, SB 285 relating to wastewater systems. Establishes a three-year new waste management solution and cesspool system demonstration pilot program within UH Water Resources Research Center to examine and demonstrate new wastewater and cesspool technology systems. Implement those technologies and demonstration projects in areas across the state that are identified as priority level one in the 2021 Hawaii Cesspool Hazard Assessment and Prioritization to Report and establish a similar ranking system for prioritization levels for the islands of Mo'akai, Lanai, and Ni'ihau. Requires UH Water Resources Research Center to submit reports to the ledge. And first up on SB 285 is the Department of Health.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Tomomi-Sukie, Department of Health, Wastewater Branch, here for Sena Pruder. The Department of Health stands on our written testimony in support.
Thank you, Mark. Next is UH. Zoom?
Hello, my name is Tao Yan. I'm here on behalf of Chris Shuler. And I'm Associate Director of Water Resources Research Center at the University of Hawaii. And we're in support of SB 285.
Thank you. Next is Department of Fine Homelands.
Chair Kim, Chair Gabbard, all of yours, obviously. Your process, uncles and sables, for your next question.
Can your name please?
Oriana.
Oriana, thank you, Oriana. Next is Chris Shuler. And Mark Ison. You're in support. Lindsay Garcia from Hawaii Realtors. Also in support. And there were nine more, nine others in support, none in opposition. Members, are there any questions?
Yeah, I guess. Senate University. I think you're gonna, what's your work plan, given the priority areas that were identified earlier? Are you going to be able to cover all of the, all of those priority areas in the three years of the pilot?
So we haven't get to the detail of that. I think it's feasible. And it really depends on the funding, but we believe we have the expertise. And if we gave you enough resources, we can pull it off.
Well, you have a ballpark on depending, what's the ballpark as far as the amount of money that's included?
I don't have a detailed budget number to discuss at this moment.
Well, you've got $3 million. What can you do?
I established, create a pilot program, and that will test the safety and efficacy of the new emerging technologies. And what's important here is to make sure that this technology is not only effective, but also cost-effective. Once we have that determined, then we're going to try to support Hawaii Department of Health in approving, you know, in their process, in approving this say effective and less costly technologies, large-scale application.
All right. Anyone else? Question for DHHL? Say, Oriana, is that right?
Yes. Aloha, Senator Gabbard.
Aloha. So what role does DHHL play in the conversion process?
We are not party to this bill. However, we are in strong support of this bill because we have approximately 2,500 cesspools on Hawaiian homelands, which totals about 3% of all statewide cesspools. I believe in total, there are approximately 88,000 total. So we are in strong support of the Department of Health as well as University of Hawaii in reaching success with this requirement.
And would DHHL, would you consider an educational role in collaboration with UH in terms of helping the native Hawaiians, the Hawaiian community?
Absolutely. I think education will continue to be a strong factor and component in reaching success with this measure and also the overall objective.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
All right, moving on. SB 518 relating to aquaculture. Requires UHC grant program to contract with an independent consultant to establish a five-year plan to develop goals, objectives, and an operational plan with budgets and timelines to strengthen and grow the aquaculture industry in the state. And then first up is AG's office.
Good afternoon, Chair Viber, Chair Kim, Deputy Lieutenant General Candace Park on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. We'd just like to point out that for this bill, we recommend putting in the language that the matter is a matter of statewide concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Please.
Aloha, Senator Gabbard, Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, and members of the committee. My name is Darren Okimoto, and I serve as the Associate Director and Extension Leader for the University of Hawaii Secret College Program at UH. Our program supports Senate Bill 518 with acceptance of the following recommendations to the committee. That the bill's passage does not replace or adversely impact priorities as indicated in the university's border regions-approved executive biennial budget. And second, that language pertaining to submission of the plan to the legislature be modified prior to convening of the 2025 legislative session to allow sufficient time to initiate and complete the strategic planning process as evidenced in the Companion House Bill 1268. So based on our past experience with legislative appropriations, we have typically received funding in early fall, which would only leave us with a few months to implement the activity. Funding this measure will help the industry to formalize and set clearly defined goals for aquaculture in the state, along with developing a mission and vision that is aligned with the state of Hawaii. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify on this measure.
Anyone else? Members, questions?
Yeah, I have a question for University of Hawaii.
Sure.
So you're, I'm sorry, in support of this measure, right? With the conditions that you.
Yes, we are.
So is this an important program for the university, for aquaculture?
Yeah, so one of the things that's been happening over the past several years is that, you know, we've been able to secure NOAA funding to support aquaculture in the state. And so one of the projects that we received funding for was to create this Hawaii Aquaculture Collaborative, which is an industry-led initiative that we've convened over, say, 100-plus members of the industry, fish pond practitioners, and other related supporting agencies. And so they identify, you know, strategic planning as one of the priorities. And this is a way for them to actually speak as one voice. And so they voice this as something that's really important for them to do. And what we want to do is have them come together, provide their vision, complete the plan, and hope to align that with the one that the state of Hawaii is developing at the same time, so we can all move in the same direction together.
Okay. So then if it's so important, why is it it's not part of the UH's budget? Because you said that you only support this program if it aligns, it doesn't supply anything that the border regions already pass in their budget. So if it does, then this project is not needed?
So the request, the request for this bill actually was based on language that's introduced by the industry itself. And so the industry was the one that submitted the request, right?
You folks are supporting it and you just told us that you think this is a really important program to bring everybody together, align, you know, what you folks are doing. So if it's that important, then how, why is it that, was it even requested to be part of the university's budget?
Well, our program actually is supported by NOAA. And so we're federally funded program. And we require, Congress requires a 50% matching requirement. And so the way that we support our program's activities is through extramarital funding. And so, so one of the things that we're doing is we're trying to raise funding, support this initiative. And so the university doesn't have that funding, support this. This is a new initiative.
Yeah, but they can ask us for, they ask us for all kinds of monies for initiatives, right, UH?
Well, I, I can't speak for the, I'm speaking for my program.
Right, but I'm just wondering why your program, did your program ask the university for funding to be included part of the budget?
The university provides as part of its matching commitment to NOAA for seagrass, they provide five to full-time positions. And so that's the funding that the university provides as part of the matching requirement.
I, I understand. I just, it just bothers me when, you know, everybody comes and you're not the only one. Well, we support this as long as there's a surplight of the budget. And so I'm just wondering if it was so important, then why isn't it part of the budget? And so if it does surplant, we cut something else to give you guys the money that you don't want it?
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that it's something that the industry is asking, or asking the state for funding. And if that's something that you folks would consider, then please fund it.
So maybe we'll fund this and not fund something else that they're asking.
Well, that's your decision.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there were six. In favor and none opposed on that. Measure, we're moving on to SB 646. Relating to ornamental ginger, appropriates funds for statewide research into ornamental ginger pathogens, prevention of the spread of ornamental ginger pathogens. And production and distribution of pathogen-free ornamental ginger plants and outreach to ornamental producers. First up is Anya Hesper with CITAR.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, rest of the committee. Thank you for providing the opportunity to testify in support of this bill. Now, ginger, ornamental ginger is a value crop here in Hawaii. For last couple of years, they have been, the growers have been dealing with viruses and diseases. And a couple of years ago, CITAR faculty actually was able to identify three of these viruses and one of the pathogen. And then also our collaborators identified additional 14 viruses. So in the past, we have, we are continuing doing research and trying to find the best way to help our growers. And one, I think the most exciting things that our researchers were able to do, we actually were able to identify virus-free plants. And that was not, not an easy task because lots of plants are already infected. And then we have worked with our collaborators also to see if we can do tissue culture of that virus-free plants. And they were successful. So this specifically bill looks into the future to see how we can continue helping our growers. To address, to address. These issues and some of the things, the most important things that if this bill is passed with support, it's actually, you would first of all. Do the research to see how long does it take the virus-free culture plants to, to, to stand up to the virus? The second thing, if the results are positive from the first experiment, we're going to, of course, work on tissue culture. Continue developing large number of tissue culture plants that will be available to the farmers. And also. Continue working on the, looking for additional viruses and diseases to make sure that they don't surprise us. And on that, for that reason, I would like to stay in support of this bill as long as it does not have a negative impact of reaching approved budget. Thank you, and I'm curious to answer any questions.
Next is Brian Miyamoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau in support. Russell Galanti. Doing, is Russell with us? Aloha, Russell.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee. Thanks for giving me a chance to testify. I am the extension agent faculty that works statewide on the red ginger virus issue. I have been doing so for the past four years. Just to give you a little bit of understanding, we've lost over half the farms that have been producing red ginger since 2014. And that number is continuing to decrease. We found the viruses across the state. We found two new viruses, completely new to science. It took a very long time to do that. The current only accepted solution for something like this widespread of a virus is to produce virus-free plants. They do practice, for example, for banana, for banana bunchy top. They do this for potato, for producing bacteria-free potatoes on a larger scale across the world. So right now, producing virus-free plants is, is really the only accepted solution from the experts. And talking about banana and other crop species, these two new viruses. Like many of the other viruses, may spread to plants outside of just ornamental ginger. So it would also be important to use this funding to understand whether or not these viruses will affect other plant species as well, some of them larger economic crops. So I am testifying in support of this funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. You can stick around for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, anyone else want to testify on 646? Nine in support, zero opposed. Members, any questions?
I have a question.
Senator Kidania.
For Anya or Russell, I'm curious as to specifically, what is the disease? How do you identify it? Then it's something, is it something that people who have ginger plants in their yard will see?
Thank you for that question, and I will ask the expert, Russell, to answer it, if that's okay with.
Sure. So part of the previous funding was characterizing and cataloging disease symptoms and matching them to one or more viruses. So it's, it, these viruses can co-infect. So there's multiple infections that can occur, up to six viruses can co-infect one ginger. And so we, we have developed a catalog and we've distributed that and, and had field days and seminars. So people understand the potential viruses that they have based off their symptoms. More work needs to be done there, but we have that somewhat mature at this point.
Yes, so is there a remedy or a solution that. People who have ginger plants?
Sure.
Be able to use?
That's the pernicious nature of viruses in plants. You can't cure a plant of a virus, or at least we haven't done so successfully. In many recorded cases, there aren't really virusides to use. And that's why when it comes to virus plants. If you, the only solution is to eliminate the current plant that's virus and replant with virus-free plants. And this is the case for pretty much every, every major virus that we deal with in, in crop production.
But how do we recognize that there's a virus? Does the plant turn black or what?
There, well, there's a, a long list of, of symptoms that can occur, but the most common one is striping in the leaves. It's somewhat indicative and it looks like chlorotic streaking. And we actually have a, a small catalog of, of what that looks like. And it can be anywhere from, from that simple of a symptom all the way down to full plant death. Or, or the leaves look crinkly, bleached. So there are, there are ways to determine it visually. But it's important to also do testing in a laboratory, and that's kind of where it gets expensive.
Well, yeah, but I'm guessing that most homeowners who just do this casually for ornamental plants in their yard do not know that. So, you know, we could have virus plants that we're not aware of because none of that information is out in the public.
So Chair, Vice Chair, if I can actually comment on that. So that's where the beauty of extension comes. So we actually have produced extension publication that is available to public. So if they wanted to look at it, this is available. And I will be happy to provide you with a copy if you have a ginger growing.
My point is if we don't know that it exists, we're not looking for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, like when we had the fire ants, the department, you know, went public. And so we were able to identify in Milalani and get rid of it quickly, but this is the first I'm hearing about this fire. So I'm just concerned that we're not aware. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, Anna, so we were just in South Carolina. And we had toured their facility on different research and viruses and pathogens. The interaction we had with them and their extension agents was that they work with you guys here in Hawaii. And that they also do the same type of research. So where's that research that they've done? And it's not just on bananas and, and stuff. But they also had like sweet potatoes, ornamentals. So in fact, I think I have one of the contacts of them, but they have been doing work for you guys as well on the research. So are we overlapping? And, you know, if they're doing it, why, why should we be also doing it here if you guys come out with the same result?
This is a, this is a great question. So CITAR faculty works with collaboration across nation and internationally to address big issues. So for example, issue like this, especially related to viruses, very complicated. And just, it takes a long time to, to come up with the answers. So we collaborating with other researchers, we share the information, we attend the conferences and so on. So I would say the more people work on it, the better chance we have to find the answers.
Yeah, well, you know, because if I took a, if I took a plant and I said, okay, you know, identification. Which I did to UH here on Oahu, it took me six weeks to get a response back. I just sent one into South Carolina and it took me 48 hours.
Yes, I recognize the issue and we are working on improving our diagnostic service lab. I have, I have been interim dean for six months and it's something that I'm looking into it. So yes, thank you for that and we will do best to.
This has been going on for years, you know, and it, it's really hard to swallow. Because I take the same soil sample and send it to California and get a response back in 24 hours. That takes here eight weeks to get back that response, but then the crop is completely wiped out.
That's a, that's really kind of heartbreaking. And the reason why, yeah, what is heartbreaking is that our facility, diagnostic facility have been neglected for the decades. So we have hired a new director, a new person to run the facilities. And he identified that some of our equipment is like 30, 40 years old. With diagnosis of things like soil and viruses, you really need to have a brand new.
My question is, do we just send it out of state to have it diagnosed for, for farmers and ranchers here? Or do we continue to fund research here since we can seem to move it across faster and get the results? To help these farms identify pests and then target the management practices?
This is an interesting question, right? So when you're talking about sending samples out of the state for identification. We are actually looking, you know, as we're reviving our new diagnostic laboratory, we're actually looking at. What, what can we do here with the funds that we have? What we can do with the faculty that we have here? And which of these diagnoses might be better served, you know, than on the mainland? The one thing that we actually are discussing, which I'm very excited about, especially when it comes to diagnosis into the soil. Is that in the past, we were just providing the results, but now one of the thing that I cannot brought up. And the, the person that we have running the lab agrees is that we not only need to provide the, the results. But we also have to explain what that means and what steps need to be done first. So not only the provide diagnosis or say, okay, this is a problem, but provide the solutions, how to, how to change that problem.
Yeah, I think that's what we're getting right now. We're having to have those results faster. And then what is the remedy? Yeah, so they literally come back and they said, here's the treatment. Either you leave that land fallow, clean it up, you know, move to another area, put down a cover crop or something that will literally be a bumper crop. Versus trying to combat it with some kind of pesticide and stuff. So I just looking at an overlap that takes us six weeks here versus I can get something back within 24 to 48 hours. Because, I mean. You gotta look at the whole situation here. By the time you just come to a result, that crop is completely gone. So what, what I'm seeing is why fund research here if I can get research done across the US in 24 to 48 hours?
Yeah, so I, I, I think that what I think is important to, to kind of remember that is the difference between the, doing the research. And finding the solutions to the problems like you heard about ginger, no one else have been worked on, on that.
Part is that they gave me the solution. They gave me the solution on how to treat, whether it was whitefly, whether it was beetle. And then the latest to come to Hawaii, which I'm sure you guys don't even have it yet, is a grub. Which I plan on bringing a grub to you guys and see how fast you guys can tell me what the treatment and remedy. But, but that's okay, Anna. We can have this fully.
Yes, I'm looking forward. Yes, thank you for your comments and I'm looking forward for the conversation and I'm sure we can come up with a solution.
One more question, or maybe a request. So Anna, can you, can the department provide us, the committee, with the list of how many staff do you have in diagnosis? That I do in diagnosis and your labs? And, you know, we want to see what's the level that you're, that you're actually staffing this? And what is it costing us? And if the turnaround is six weeks or longer, you know, that's something that we should be considering.
That's a, I would be happy to do that. As I mentioned to, to the Senator, that our laboratory was really outdated and we are investing.
Right, and what is the cost to me then updated? And even if you update it, is it going to be a quicker turnaround? Is it going to be a 24-hour, 48-hour turnaround? Because I find that a lot of state services, you can't even get a birth certificate copied. It takes you six months to get that. So it worries me that these services aren't being provided on a timely basis.
Yes, I understand your concern and the, I, I, one of the problem with the turnaround is that we just don't have enough staff. Right now, we have only two people in, maybe three, but I can give it.
What is, how many do we have? And how many would we need to have a quick turnaround? And maybe that investment, if somebody else can do it quicker and cheaper, then for us to then hire 10 more people, fringe benefits and so forth. It'd be simpler that we do send it away.
Yes, and, and we actually looking at that as a CITAR administration, how best.
And take that funding that we're going to use for that and put it in something else, right?
Well, this one is specifically to do research on, on ginger.
I understand, but there is a concern raised.
Yes, and thank you for bringing your concern.
Thank you. Moving on to the next measure, SB 648. Relating to aquaculture, requires UH in consultation with the Department of Ag to establish and administer an aquaculture disease diagnostic laboratory. Appropriates funds for the lab and establishes and appropriates funds for aquaculture that now in positions in the Department of Ag. First up is the Attorney General's office.
Again, the Department of the Attorney General would just like to indicate, to recommend that the language of the matter is a statewide concern be inserted into the language of the bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is UH.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, rest of the committee. Anya Vitoric here, interning for CITAR. Thank you for providing this opportunity to testify on this bill. We are in support of intent, but however, we cannot, we are concerned with the way that the bill is written. I would like to provide some suggestions. So right now, Department of Agriculture already has the. Disease Diagnostic Laboratory. And that is mostly concentrating on the livestock and poultry and some aquaculture. CITAR has established the testing laboratory that specifically concentrates on PCR testing. And is specifically related to aquaculture. We really believe that the best way to address industry needs to actually establish aquaculture disease diagnostic program. Within Department Agriculture with the existing laboratory. And on, we will defer to the HDOA related to the amount of funding that they would need to do so. Thank you for, thank you for allowing me to testify in support of the intent, but we cannot support passage of this bill as it's written. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, Chair Kim, Todd La with the Department of Agriculture. We stand on our testimony in support with amendments that, um, dovetail with what was just said by the University of Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau. In support of the Local Food Coalition, Kendall Matsuyoshi.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kedani, members of the committee. Kendall Matsuyoshi, on behalf of the Local Food Coalition, uh, we stand in support of this bill and are in agreement with the Department of Agriculture and CETA to move the lab uh, to the Department of Agriculture. And we also support, um, clarifying section two that the funds can be used for the day-to-day support of the aquaculture industry as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify on this measures? SB 648. Members, any questions?
So if the funding is shifted to DOA, do we still need the amendment you suggested or not?
If, if just the funding is shifted, but the requirements are still on, POMBE waits to do what's indicated in the bill, then you would need.
But they're still agreeing to do it voluntarily. It seems like they're eager to do it. We're not requiring them to do it.
Oh, I guess I took the language literally in the bill.
No, but I, I think the amendments that everyone's requesting though is that CETA would be consulting with them, but not necess- they would be running the, the lab that's being proposed.
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess I would have to see the, the amended language before I could indicate. But if it's not gonna, if it's gonna take a requirement, the requirements off of UH, then you're correct, you would not need that language. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just have a question for the Department of Ag or from UH. But so this bill is establishing and administering aquaculture disease diagnostic laboratory. So what is it? Well, why wouldn't we want to put a diagnostic laboratory for the previous bill in 646?
Sorry, uh, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, this bill, well, I think you're opposed to this bill, right? 648?
Uh, yes, I support the intent, but I oppose the way that it's written, yes.
Okay, so whoever supports moving or putting or administering and establishing an aquaculture disease diagnostic laboratory, why isn't we also moving or putting the diagnostic laboratory for plants or ginger or so, like in the previous bill?
So.
That Senator Decoy brought up, that how she cannot get these, um.
Yes, so, uh, so diagnostics, uh, when it comes to plants, animals and, and, uh, diseases in plants and animals, but a different kind of diagnostics that needs to be done. So not every diagnostics that, for example, is, uh, on, on viruses, on ginger, can be addressed in the laboratory that deals with the diseases on animals. Uh, so.
But aquaculture can't be.
Uh, sorry?
Aquaculture can't be in the same laboratory as.
It's just different testing. So there are lots of different, just like when you have a test for flu or test for this, for that, there are different tests that need to be done and different equipment that needs to be bought for that. So.
Every different kind of test requires a diagnostic laboratory.
No, 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 I, that, not, absolutely not. Yes, yeah, no, no, absolutely not. But they cannot have to be in the same area. So, uh, if you do diagnostic on human diseases or, or things, you need the one kind of lab with the different regulations and so on. If you're trying to do diagnostics on the, uh, animal diseases and so on, it, it's, uh, I am not that extremely familiar with all the testing, but I just know that, uh, the different expertise.
Or fish or lifting can be done under aquaculture diagnostic laboratory?
Yes. So what happens is that right now, HDOA already has that laboratory that, that deals with livestock and poultry. And see, aquaculture falls, falls into the same bucket, right? So they could. So right now, UH is doing PCR testing, which is one kind of testing specifically on shrimp and, and so on. And, uh, we're not able to sustain it anymore. We're just thinking that it's better if it goes to the Department of Ag and we're looking towards collaboration, working with them on it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Department of Ag. So would the lab be exclusively under the use and the purview of Department of Ag? Or would there be access for aquaculture industry leaders?
Uh, thanks for the question, Chair. Um, hmm. Well, there's two levels to that. First of all, it would be available for the other livestock sectors. So like the beef cattle, beef, pork and poultry. Um, we already provide services out to the industry, so I believe that would continue. Um, what we're adding is a, is a different kind of testing, this PCR testing. And again, I'm not the scientist, so I'm, but that's just another tool in the, in the laboratory tool belts. So I believe that, that outreach would continue.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to SB 663. Appropriating funds for the establishment of agriculture education coordinator position within UH at Manoa College of Tropical Ag and Human Resources. First up is Department of Ag.
Thank you, chairs. The department stands on its written testimony in support.
Second is Anna, with CETA.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair Ania Viatorek, interim dean for College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources. Thank you for providing me opportunity to testify in the strong support of this bill. Uh, we all know that we are working on increasing the food production here in Hawaii. Uh, and one of the way to do this is to bring more farmers and, uh, kind of grow our own, as I say. Uh, and the only way we can do this is if we can work together across the state in, uh, all the efforts. And in 2017, uh, CETA have convened the group, the working group of, uh, all the parties that are involved in the K to 12 and, and P to, uh, K to 12 plus college, uh, education when it goes, when it comes to this. And one of the strongest recommendations that came out from that working group was that we do hire the coordinator that is going to work together, uh, with our stakeholders, with our, uh, with rest of the people who are involved in the ag education. So I have been involved in the, actually K to 12 education as a faculty for many years. I'm very passionate about it. I think most students, uh, young students we educate, better will be when it comes to growing our own farmers. So for that reason, I strongly support this bill as long as it does not have a negative impact of approved Board of Region budget for UH. Uh, thank you for opportunity to testify and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify on 663, SB 663? Five in support, zero opposed. Members, any questions?
Yeah, specific, oh, this coordinator will do what again? I know you said coordinate, but coordinate UH, UHA programs with the schools or?
No, so, uh, let me clarify that. So a number of programs, uh, state programs like within Department of Education or, uh, toward, in, towards CETA, or many programs actually run by nonprofit organizations. And that they are working on, uh, educating our K to 12, uh, students when it comes to agriculture, importance of food. So the idea that this position, the idea of this position is that this person is going to work across the, not only UH and state system, but working with our partners, community leaders to make sure that the curriculum or information that we provide to the students is more or less the same, but also to make sure that we don't overlap. So just great example how we could overlap. I have developed the curriculum, uh, to teach the, uh, young children, uh, how to grow the seeds. And I already put my efforts and so on into it. If we have somebody who is coordinating that and knows that, for example, someone in Wahua would like to teach the students to do so, then they will know that I have that, uh, curriculum developed and we can share it. So I really believe that working together, we can really, uh, make this happen.
I just want to make sure that the, that the position is, you know, articulated is to what are the goals, what are the outcomes that we're going to get and not just have someone there kind of floating around.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Next is Nicole Galassi with the Hawaii Catalans Council. Wait a minute, are we on 663?
Hmm, no, we're on.
1488, right? Okay, I was looking up there.
That's okay.
Nicole Galassi. Zoom is in support.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Inga Gibson with the Animal Welfare Institute.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, Chair Kim. Thanks so much for the opportunity. Inga Gibson, on behalf of the Animal Welfare Institute, in support. I just wanted to mention that this measure came out, uh, um, recent rural process and that we worked with, with the Department of Agriculture and the industry. Mahalo, Chair Gabbard, for your assistance with that a few years ago. Um, during that real process, um, our veterinarians had recommended, um, that shade and water be provided to the cattle uh, during their ocean transport trips, um, between islands and also to the mainland. As many of you know, thousands of cattle, um, are shipped, um, from Hawaii to the mainland and also a, a lesser number inter-island. So unfortunately, Department of Agriculture, uh, pointed out that at that time, they didn't feel that they have the data to adopt, um, the shade and water requirements for those, those trips of, uh, extending 24 hours. Um, and that they wanted to conduct this heat stress study. So in strong support and hopefully, uh, the findings will benefit not only our local cattle here and the cattle industry, but also, uh, be a benefit to, um, other, uh, cattle and, um, animal welfare concerns, um, in other areas where cattle are also shipped via ocean transport vessels. So mahalo for the opportunity.
Thank you, Inga. Anyone else wanting to testify on 1488? Please, Anna.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, rest of the committee, Ania Viatorek, uh, interim dean for CETA. Uh, I would like to, uh, support the bill SB 1488. As the previous, uh, also mentioned, this topic came out during the Board of Agriculture meeting. The last time that we talked about it was in the fall. There were concerns from the, uh, some of the groups that the welfare of animal, uh, might be affected by the shipment. And so, uh, for that reason, uh, we are supporting the, this, uh, this bill. Uh, we have expertise in the college that would allow us to continue, to, to do this study. So, uh, uh, thank you for allowing me to provide testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Anyone else?
A two gentleman testimony with respect to 1488 and then statewide concern language.
Okay. Members, any questions?
Quick question, uh, Chair.
Yes.
CETA. So have, have we lost any animals suffering from heat stress to inter-island ocean transport?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, but again, um, I, this is not area, my area of expertise. Uh, I don't know if we have, uh, maybe the cattle association can ask and answer that. I do, I am not, not that I'm aware of. Here we go.
Yeah, we need a, so, um, what do we hope to find out from this study?
So the study is to, uh, actually look at the effect of a heat stress on, on the livestock and at what point of, what kind of temperatures, for example, would need to be reached for the animal to be, uh, welfare, animal welfare to be, uh, affected. So the idea is to, to, to look at it, uh, what kind of temperatures uh, would need to be reached in the containers, shipping containers or on the way, when they wait to be shipped to, to have a negative impact on the welfare.
Yeah, it just kind of shocked us. In all the years that we've been moving cattle, I never saw any of them yet under heat stress. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
So what precipitated this?
So I have been in this position for six months, but as an interim dean for CETA, I sit on the, the Board of Agriculture. Uh, and I, the, when I heard the first time about this concern was during the time, uh, when Board of Agriculture, uh, there were concerns brought to the Board of Agriculture by a number of concern, uh, organizations and they would like.
Right, but they should show us some data that warrants us spending this kind of money for this study. I'm not aware of.
I, I am not, I think that there is no, uh, data available, at least to the state of Hawaii. And we will, uh, we will be happy to conduct the study if, uh, if it's, if you, if the committees think that is necessary.
Well, what if we don't fund it? Are you still going to conduct the study?
Uh, that would, our faculty, uh, is the one who actually looks for the external funding to any kind of research that they want to do. So if, if a faculty, if our livestock faculty believes that this is the issue, they will probably seek the external funding to, to support it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take a, if we assess with the decision making.
I'll back together the Joint Committee on Higher Education and Agriculture and the Environment for Decision Making. The chairs have, uh, discussed this and recommendation for the first bill, Senate Bill 1586 relating to the University of Hawaii College of Tropical Agriculture, where we will, uh, establish five full-time equipment positions. The recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion, members? Hearing on, uh, Vice Chair, the Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 1586 to pass, Anna member, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga, excuse. Senator Keith Agarwal. Senator Fabel, excuse. Measure adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Same recommendation for AEN. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Senator Decoy?
Uh, Vice Chair, excuse. Senator Decoy votes aye. Senator rules.
Aye.
Senator Awang.
Aye.
Chair recommendation passes.
Thank you, members. Moving on to SB 285. To do with wastewater systems. The chair's recommendation, um, will be to pass with amendments that were made by Department of Health. Specifically, on page six, line seven. Um, deleting waste management solution and cesspool. And then adding the word wastewater there. On page six, line 10 and 11. Deleting the words and cesspool and also cesspool. Implement those technologies in cesspool, delete that and then add wastewater. Word wastewater. Page seven, line five. Deleting the word and cesspool. Page seven, line 11, deleting the word cesspool and adding the word wastewater. Page eight, line two, deleting the word cesspool and adding wastewater. And page eight, line 12, deleting cesspool and adding wastewater. Page nine, line six, deleting waste management and cesspool and adding the word wastewater. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Senator Decoy?
Members voting on SB 285 with amendments. Chair's recommendation is to pass. Chair votes aye. Senator Richards, excuse. Senator Decoy votes aye. Senator rules. Senator Awang.
Aye.
Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
For the, for the decision for, um, higher education, same recommendation, uh, passed with amendments. Chair votes aye. Senate Bill 285 for higher ed, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Agarwal.
Aye.
Measure's adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next measure is SB 518 relating to aquaculture. Uh, UHC grant program or five-year plan. Uh, the chair's recommendation would be to pass with amendment that is given by the AG's office that this would be a law of statewide concern. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. that this would be a law of statewide concern. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. For AEN?
Members voting on SB 518. Chair's recommendation is passed with amendment, recognizing all members here with the, with the excuse, member of Senator Richards. Any needs? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
For Committee on Higher Education, the same recommendation, pass Senate Bill 518 with amendments. Any discussion, members? If not, Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Agarwal.
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. SB 646 relating to ornamental ginger and pathogens. The chair's recommendation would be to pass as is. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Senator Decoy?
Members voting on SB 646, recommendation to pass unamended, recognizing all members here with the excuse. So Senator Richards, any needs?
No vote.
No vote for Senator Awah. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
Same recommendation for Committee on Higher Education. Any discussion, members? If not, Chair votes aye.
For Senate Bill 646 to pass with amendments?
Yes.
Passed with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Agarwal. Measure is adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, was that as is? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm mistaken, so.
Yeah, as is. Senate Bill 646?
Yeah. So we want to take the vote for Senator-
Senate Bill 646 for higher ed. Recommendation with the chair to pass unamended. Chair voted aye. Vice Chair voted aye. Senator Keith Agarwal.
Yes.
Measure is adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Next is SB 648 relating to aquaculture. The chair's recommendation would be to pass with amendments. The first recommended by Department of Ag, replace UHCitar with the Department of Ag as the recipient of the appropriation, establish the proposed lab in the state veterinary lab building in the Department of Ag Animal Industry Division Veterinary Lab Services Branch. Also add two additional full-time equivalent microbiologists, three, SR20 positions. And also we'll add the amendment that was suggested by the AG's offices as a matter of statewide concern. Any discussion, members? Chair votes aye. Senator Decoy?
Members, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, recognizing all members here with the excuse. So Senator Richards, any reservations or needs?
No vote.
No vote for Senator Awah. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
Same recommendations. Committee on Higher Education to pass out Senate Bill 648 with amendments.
Senate Bill 648 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Agarwal.
Yes.
Measure is adopted, Madam Chair.
Moving on to SB 663, 663, relating to the UH Ag Education Coordinator. The chair's recommendation will be to pass unamended. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Senator Decoy?
Members voting on Senate Bill 663. Chair's recommendation pass unamended, recognizing all members here with the excuse of Senator Richards, any reservations or needs?
No vote.
No vote for Senator Awah. Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
For Committee on Higher Education, same recommendation to pass as is Senate Bill 663.
Chair votes aye. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Keith Agarwal. Measure is adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And the final measure on the 307 agenda is SB 1488 relating to livestock. The chair's recommendation will be to amend this measure. We'll add the AG's statewide concern. We'll also take out the funding on page three, section three, and that will put in the committee report that the, in the testimony that the researchers can get external grants to fund this.
Could.
Could get external grants, yes.
If you thought it was meritorious.
To extend. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
Members voting on SB 1488 with amendments. Chair's recommendation is to pass, recognizing the excuse of Senator Richards. Any reservations or needs?
No vote.
No vote for Senator Awah. Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
For same recommendation for higher education to amend Senate Bill 1488. Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Agarwal.
Yes.
Measure is adopted, Madam Chair.
Thank you, members. Higher education, we have two more items on the 305 agenda. Hopefully it'll be quick because we are running out of time. So IT, can you count us down? Thank you. We call to order the Higher Education Committee, the 305 agenda. Today's Tuesday, February 14. We're in Rule 229. The first item is Senate Bill 547, SB 1. This relates to the border regions, requires University of Hawaii Border Regions to approve by majority vote, any designee selected to serve or participate for the chairperson as a voting or non-voting member of any legislative, established board, commission, or working group or task force. We have one testifier with comments, Jamie Gold from the University of Hawaii Border Regions. Basically, she said they had not met to even discuss this measure. So there's no, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Hearing none. Members, any discussion? Not. We'll move on to Senate Bill 155 relating to University of Hawaii establishes and appropriates funds for a network improvement community task force to develop K-12 science, technology, engineer, mathematics, teacher, education degree for the University of Hawaii and report to the legislature. Appropriates funds for the establishment of this program and appropriates funds to the University of Hawaii Maui College Office of International and Regional Partnerships for study abroad programs. We have Keith Hayashi testifying for Department of Education, one from DOE. Not Della Terraoka testifying for the University of Hawaii in support. Welcome.
Yes, we, I'm representing the community constituents and we stand on our best testimony in support.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Hearing none. Final item on the agenda. Oh, no, that's it, right? We did 15, we did 1586.
155.
Yeah, that was 155. But we did already 151. Yeah, we did 1586. Five full-time position. Just 155. 547 is- Okay, any other discussion? Hearing that, I'll go right into decision making. Members, for the first item, Senate Bill 547. Again, this is relating to the border regions. This is a situation where many times it's designated that the chair of the border regions will in fact represent the regions on these boards. And if he can't, then he will do a designee. And there were some concerns raised that the chair doesn't consult the board necessarily on who that designee might be. And so this would just make it where he would discuss it with the board and they would agree or disagree with the decision. So the recommendation is to leave, pass as is. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vice Chair, Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 547, SB 1, to pass unamended. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga, excuse. Senator Agarwal.
Yes.
And Senator Favela, excuse. Measure is adopted.
Thank you. And for Senate Bill 155, this is for the community task force to develop a K-12 technology program and for the University of Hawaii Maui College of International and Regional Partnerships for study abroad programs. Any discussion, members? Hearing none. Recommendation is to pass as is. The Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 155, pass unamended. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Keith Agarwal.
Aye.
Measure is adopted.
Thank you. And we are done at 4:30. Thank-